We're calling to order, oh, are these, are these not going to work?
We're working on that right now.
Okay, so I don't need to speak into my microphone? I'm sorry, what?
What about your pillow?
Oh, that's your pillow. Okay, I'm calling to order our meeting, our special meeting tonight. And we do have a quorum, however, our distinguished councilman Carl Munger is not here, so he will be absent today. And we will please stand, and you are in good hands because the mayor is going to say invitation and the mayor of Congress will do the pledges. What a deal. Our Father in heaven, this is the day the Lord has made, and let us rejoice and be glad in it. And I say, amen, rejoice, we're so thankful, Father, for the Trophy Club, all the men and women who protect and serve people in this town. We did not forget those who came before us, giving and preserving the life and purpose of Trophy Club. We gather in these chambers to celebrate and deliver, deliver, del, well, deliver. I ask for the presence of your Spirit of love, kindness, patience, and joy, praying for wisdom as together we work for what is best for Trophy Club. My prayer is that we will glorify you in all we say and do, and ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And we, you were selected for that reason. I want to, before we begin, we have a new member on our staff, and I would like for our chief, Patrick Arada, to introduce Dean.
Mayor, Council, elected, in charge, town attorney, Dean Rogan, from Toast, along from that subway.
What does Toast mean, please?
Taylor Olson, Atkins, Rollin, Eland.
Uh, who got that?
Toast.
Toast.
Yeah.
It's easier to say.
Not with the T, toast.
T-O-A-S-E.
Yeah. Any way you want to say it.
No, no, no.
I know what you mean.
Well, we're very happy to have you here. Would you like to tell us just a little bit about who you are, where you come from, and how you think you might help Trophy Club?
Um, sure, yeah, so most of my practice, actually, all my practice as a lawyer, been in the US law. Um, I've been to several different cities, gained lots of experience doing that. Right now, I'm a partner at Toast, and so I do a lot of transactional work, economic development, kind of the big development projects, and I'm really happy to be here. I have five little ones at home, I mean, fifteen down the page two.
You might speak to Arada about that. He knows exactly about Toast.
So, and I grew up in the army, so I'm kind of all around, everywhere.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, we're delighted to have you. Would y'all want to ask him any questions?
We're delighted to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to be here.
Okay, thank you so much, Dean.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, you're going to read the public comments, please?
We don't have any.
Oh, well, that's easy, you're not going to read it either.
I'm not.
I like that. Are we ready, Jason, for your presentation?
Yes, ma'am. So, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I apologize if we had an AV presentation for you that gave you a better picture of what we're doing tonight, but we're having some difficulties there, so I'll do my best to explain, okay? But, so tonight, thanks to a charitable donation from Atmos Energy, so Trophy Club Fire Department now has additional tools in the toolbox for natural gas detection, all right? Atmos Energy is helping us purchase two combustible gas detectors. These devices help firefighters confirm the presence of natural gas. They help us identify the source of a leak and determine if the levels of gas warrant some sort of evacuation in the immediate area. So, in fact, these are the same detectors that are used by Atmos personnel.
Hello? Yeah.
Great. So, just to give you a little history about gas leaks here, our firefighters, over the last thirty-one months, have responded to thirty-eight gas leak incidents, okay? The cause and source of those incidents can vary, but digging seems to be the common theme here at Trophy Club, okay? So, our fire department responds to the scene, we isolate the area, we detect if there's any gas, we alert our nearby residents and businesses of any potential dangers, and we do that with a face-to-face approach, we knock on doors, or we can do it through our TC Alerts program, all right? Atmos Energy is notified, they work to repair that damage, and then to restore your services. So, a quick safety note, on average, Atmos pipelines are damaged ten times a day in Texas, and they have a campaign called the National Safe Digging Month, it's actually in April, and it aims to remind all Texans to call 811 before digging, all right? In closing, I'd just like to say that we value our partnership with Atmos Energy, and we recognize the importance of working together to keep our communities safe. And being said, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Andrea Crawl, she's the manager of Public Affairs in the Texas Division in Atmos Energy, and she's a Trophy Club resident.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff, and community. My name is Andrea Crawl, I'm with Atmos Energy. I am a Trophy Club resident. My mother has been in this community for twelve years, and we've known her during COVID, so happy to be here. Really appreciate the work that our firemen do to keep this community safe, and Atmos Energy is always supportive of our first responders who work with us in the interest of public safety and community safety. As the safest provider of natural gas, we're happy to reinvest in the communities we live and work in. So, Chief Arada said everything, didn't he? He talked about 811, Call Before You Dig, that really does help us prevent damage to our gas lines and keep our residents safe, and hopefully the equipment that we're helping to purchase today will even further increase the safety of this community. So, thank you all.
Well, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And where do you live in Trophy Club? Always wanted to ask that question, so.
So, I live on Pebble Beach.
Oh, cool.
Like, yeah, then it just, it's right over there.
Does Pebble Beach have gas?
Definitely.
That's, that's, that's.
You do, okay, that's good, because I don't.
Really?
No, I live on Gilfress, what can I get? The wife would love a gas stove, I just.
They don't have gas on that side of the hill.
Well, I think I can make some calls.
For the mud, not even. That's great.
Mayor would like to come down and join for a picture?
Yes, and I'd like to ask Jeff Beech to join me, because he loves fast response time.
Firefighters, you guys want to come on up with us?
All right. Yeah, wear the right shirt.
Exactly. I didn't know.
Tell you what. Mayor, right here in the middle, and Sean will pick room for them, and then we'll be on the outside. I'll be standing in the middle, I'll be back here, right there, and then go in. Is everybody in there?
Yeah, everybody's in. Got it.
We're ready to go to item number two, and to help us, I did prepare, and you have in front of you what I'm calling the proposed process for our agenda, and honestly, for the agenda, item number two. And I wanted to do this for us to help facilitate our time together, because the purpose of this meeting rests in these three particular options. So, the first item on the process is that questions that you may have, which Patrick will address, and then, as the process goes on, I just go ahead and take care of this now, we're going to discuss each of those items, one, two, three, separately, so that we get to a place where we filled it, got our information, and you're ready to go on. And at some point, if someone says, you know what, we're done, let's call point of order, and we'll go to the next, and also, there will be no motions during this discussion. So, Patrick, Arada, and you, Marko.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity. We're here tonight to talk about the fire department and our relationship with the MUD, and how we manage and operate the fire department. The fire department is operated in two parts. The fire department and the fire equipment and the fire station are owned and operated by the MUD, the Municipal Utility District for the Town and Trophy Club. The EMS, the ambulance and its personnel, is are owned and operated by the town. So, we share a joint agreement currently where we manage both components through the town with, in cooperation with the MUD. And every year, we come to an agreement on a budget, they provide their half of the budget to fund the fire department, and we fund EMS, and the services are managed by the town manager with direction from council. So, that agreement we're currently operating under today expires on September thirtieth, is why we're having this discussion. So, we have some options in front of us to talk about. The first option we'll talk about is the potential to take over the fire department from the MUD. I've been talking with Alan and some of the MUD directors in relations to that. Alan wasn't able to make it tonight, but we do have some MUD directors in the audience. That option is most probably not the most realistic option for us this year. There's a lot of complications with that, there's some discussions that would have to take place, and at the end of this term, September thirtieth, is most probably not the most appropriate time for us to try to tackle that. So, I would answer any questions we have to that, but there's a lot into trying to negotiate with the MUD, and the fact that the MUD district goes outside of our jurisdiction, they are able to tax outside of our jurisdiction to fund the fire department, which we would not be able to do, which would mean talking about a tax rate increase on our side of property tax, because they have a taxation in Tarrant County on the West Lake side of the interstate. So, that's one of the first complications with the problem. So, any questions so far on option one?
So, it's not a problem with Tarrant?
No.
So much?
It's just that the district extends into Tarrant County.
Right, because we have resources in Tarrant already that we have the ability to tax.
Right. So, I'll move on to option two. Option two is to renew, or not renew, but create a new extension or a new ILA to allow us to function as we're functioning today. We do have both of our attorneys, the town attorney and the MUD attorney, myself and Alan, are all talking and working together to prepare a new ILA to bring forth to both the council and to the MUD Board to continue a five-year relationship. It'll be one-year agreement with five years automatically renewing going forward. It would give us a ninety-day out. There will be a provision in there that Alan and the MUD Board would like to see, and we don't have a problem with so far, is that if we were to increase FTEs, full-time employees, we would go to them and make sure that they consent with that increase in employees. That is one thing that they would like to see before we do anything. They don't have a problem with us approving raises, as long as they're justified. They would like to make sure we do it at the beginning of each year and not in the middle of the year, so they can budget appropriately, so, as we do. And I think with our new budgeting process going forward and raises going forward, that those, we should maintain a realistic budget for raises going forward every year, not have to do a catch-up. So, the ILA, and we do have our town attorney here, that has been working with me and the MUD attorney to work this document forward, back and forth, I think you've seen some of it so far, and it's going to be a balanced document, there's no benefit one way or the other, it's an equal share, equal document, but it does say that we will make sure that we work with them on any big expenditures or try, if we ever want to increase the FTEs, it's got to be with their consent. So, any questions on that so far?
I have a question on the FTEs.
Mm-hmm.
If we couldn't, if we decided that we needed another staff, and the MUD disagreed with us, then is there some type of exception that is written into that? That would allow for the town to, in that case, fully fund that full-time employee?
It's not written one way or the other, as far as I tell, but I'm, it would be part of that negotiation with the MUD Board to how we would figure that out. And if they choose most probably not to, and we come back recommending it to the council, we would most probably make an addendum, Dean, that would note that we would then be paying for that one a hundred percent on us. So, it would be an addendum to the ILA, is how I would think we would do it. Is that correct, sir? The mics aren't working.
Oh, that's right, we can amend the ILA. The way we have this written right now, the way it's been drafted, and I drafted this provision, it's, it anticipates the possibility that we might be required by law to hire another officer, and I don't know if that's the case, but I've seen that in other cities, so I added some language in there to the extent, "Town will not increase the number of current personnel providing fire protection services to eligible persons unless otherwise required by law, and district shall not be responsible for towns' increase if any in the number of current personnel providing fire protection services to eligible persons." So, there's other provisions in here that allow us to amend the agreement if we need to, also accounting for cost overruns, that kind of thing.
Okay, and then, let's say that, for instance, and I don't know if or how we can cover it, or if or how it would ever occur, but what if we got to a point where the MUD felt that we should reduce headcount from current? Is there a provision in there to rectify or negotiate that type of thing?
Yeah, go ahead, I'll add to that.
Yeah, for now, there is no provision there that would allow them to make that request, or we would not be bound by that request.
And right now, yeah, and in our policy, the chief's policy, we do have a mandatory staffing level, so we would argue that the staffing levels are there for an appropriate reason, and that we would, we would fight to keep that level. So, and they've given us no indication that they're, they have any issue with our current staffing level, but there is an issue where we did hire an additional person last, in this current budget year without their consent, so.
Hey, Dean, are you done, Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you. You gave an example of a possibility whereby law we might be required, I'm not familiar with that, what?
Yeah, sure, so what I've seen in some cities is, as cities grow and expand, I understand the city's pretty much developed almost fully where that it's necessary to hire additional personnel to keep up with the ISO rating, so that folks don't have to pay additional insurance costs. And so, that would, that might be a possible scenario, but I understand there may not be a scenario here.
Yeah, we're almost built out. So, there's no expansion coming that will require an additional fire station or anything like that, so.
And we are ISO rated already.
Mm-hmm, yes. So, thank you, sir. Any other questions on, on that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the Texas Government Code Section 791.006, is this a fairly new addition? I didn't see it in the previous rendition of our ILA. It's under item eight. I'm sorry. Page nine, eight point three. Do you have that?
I do, I'm pulling it up right now. Page nine, you said?
Yes. Item eight point three.
Just give me one second.
It takes the page eight, I think. Oh, it goes into, yeah, it goes into nine.
Yes. It is not new. I want to say, I mean, without going back and looking at the code, I want to say maybe in 2011 or so it was added to 791, and don't, don't quote me on that, I have to go back and look. It's, this provision is born out of a mutual aid agreement a very long time ago between some cities here in the metroplex where it was disputed who should be responsible for another city coming in to help a city, and then having fire personnel equipment get destroyed. And so, this provision in here is mandatory. If you, if you want to shift the liability back onto the own, each party's own negligence, then you must have this provision in there.
Okay.
And so, that's, it's new, it wasn't in there previously, but it's in here now.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Mayor, any?
I'll wait until you're done, then I'll have a question.
He has a bunch of questions.
Okay, no, no problem, we're good with that. So, moving on to option three, which would, it's not do nothing, but it's not renewing the contract, it's not taking over the fire department, it basically would revert back to no agreement prior to 2016, maybe even further back than that, but it would go back to where we would operate EMS, the fire department would be operated by the MUD, so the chief would have two masters, he would report to the MUD for all items fire-related, he would, we would, he would report to us, the town, for EMS-related items. He would do two budgets, as he sort of does today, but those budgets would go to each department individually, each board, for approval, and we would then have to agree somehow to either continue to operate out of the firehouse together, because there's a joint relationship there. So, there'd have to be some type of agreement where the MUD would allow us, because the personnel, the fire personnel, are town employees, they're funded in, they're funded by both depart, by both entities, but we pay them, they're under our retirement system, and the MUD pays us back. So, in that scenario, where they're, we're not under any agreement, we would pay the employees, we would send an invoice to the MUD every two weeks for their half of the salaries. And there's a lot more complicated things to that process, but that's how it used to work when we had the fire chief, Danny Thomas, was here for twenty years, he did it that way. So, it actually sort of transitioned after 2015, is when we started with the 2016 agreement. So, it was a little bit easier when we're all in the same building, when the town and the MUD shared a building or a joint buildings. So, but that's what we would be talking about if we don't renew this ILA, going back to some type, so there would still be some type of, a very limited agreement, basically allowing us to share the firehouse and continue to share employees. So, unless there was a complete separate divide, which I don't really care to dive into that, but that there would be a scenario for that, too.
So, we're discussing the operational ILA?
Mm-hmm.
That includes those other elements in it, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So, if that operational ILA was abandoned, then we would still have to have an ILA to cover the joint use of the fire, firehouse, and I would assume coverage for the PID would have to be negotiated in that as well?
The PID is negotiated every year by the management company, and Dean will jump in here in a second if I get any of this wrong. The PID, every year, the management company negotiates their rates and their deal, and every year, they come to us and they say, here, here is what we would like, you then assess the PID residence for that payment, and that money is turned over to the MUD for fire service. EMS services is taxed through their property tax, they are not taxed by the MUD. So, Dean, is anything you want to add to that, or did I get it right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. So, my recommendation is to allow us to continue working the ILA with Alan and go to the MUD Board and renew this ILA for another five years. And, and we did get input, I did go to the MUD meeting and got some input from them, but they would like to see a, a new ILA, renewable, no joint meetings required, things like that, just automatically renews every year, so that's what we've written into this document. It's a one-year agreement, a renewable for five years, so, and I would, I would request that type of direction if you would kindly give me that.
Chief, did you say with a ninety-day out?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, yes, we do have, if we were to want to make a move, we would have a ninety-day option.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
Oh, okay.
You're just anxious there.
No, I'm not anxious to do it, okay. I understand option one's off the table, and I understand why. Option two is just to renew a new ILA. Why is the current ILA not proper or unconstitutional or whatever? Could you just explain that for openness? The 2021, we have a 2021 ILA that we're currently under, why is that, what's in there that's, that could be, maybe, possibly be considered unconstitutional?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, if you, if you look at the revisions I've made to the ILA, you can see that some of the revisions relate to appropriations language.
Right.
And so, and that's also a reason why we broke it down to one-year renewal periods, because you can't fund beyond the current.
Dean, if you don't, I'm sorry, if you could speak up so the guys in the back and everybody can hear. Yeah, I know that, but that's why I'm asking him to.
Is it working?
I'll speak louder.
Thank you.
You can come up here.
I'll come up here.
So, there, there is, and I'll just, I'll just say, it was 2005, I was wrong, not 2011. So, it's been around for a long time. At least that was the last time that provision was changed in state law. The, I've revised the ILA so that you don't get out in front of the PID. PID has a process that it must go through every single year when they approve their SAP, and so if you are assuming the thing, that funding is available when appropriate action has not been taken, then arguably, you are opening up to the argument that the PID is being bound by this document.
Obligated.
Obligated.
Okay.
And that's an argument, it may not be a winning argument, but it's a possibility, and the same goes for the city, too. And so, I've added some appropriations language in there. There's also, it's basically a funding out clause. If you don't appropriate funds, there's, there's no contract. Not only that, but 791 actually requires you to state specifically in the, in the document that the services that are being provided are paid for by current revenues.
Okay, so, that, right, that explains why we just can't renew the 2021 that we currently are operating under, okay? Then, in, in this document, in many places, is something called the maximum annual payment. Could you explain, besides what it says in there, what does it really mean and whose it benefit?
Yeah.
Or, if it's the MUD, then why doesn't the town have one?
Okay, yeah, that's a great question. So, the town doesn't need it because the town isn't paying to the MUD.
Okay.
The MUD pays to the town. The MUD is also a governmental entity, and so the MUD cannot create an unconstitutional debt the way the city cannot create an unconstitutional debt. Not only that, but the MUD has had some movement in Texas law, just like the city has, when it comes to establishing what they're calling their fire tax, and so they're trying to avoid having to go to the voters if language in the ILA somehow, if we were to make the argument, somehow they're bound to do something that is beyond what they've approved for their tax rate.
Okay. All right, I've got, what, six different ILAs up here?
Yeah.
All right? If I'm not mistaken, we still haven't found the 2008 ILA? That's mentioned, that, well, you know it must have occurred, because it's mentioned in the 2016. In your new proposed draft, thank you very much for identifying, no, that's not the right one.
No, here it is.
Thanks for identifying which one you're using, right?
Yeah.
So, I can now know what I'm looking at, because I've got multiple copies up here. And in that, you referenced the 2016 as prior ILA.
Right.
Right? Why is the 2016? Why is the 2016 ILA still around in force? Can be addressed to?
Yeah, so there's a, the term, the way that it's defined in the 2016 ILA originally provides for termination, but then there's a sentence that talks about meeting again in 2017. And then there's also another couple sentences that talk about automatic renewals for, extensions for five years. And so all of the parties have been operating as if this thing is continually renewing every five years. And arguably, it's still in effect. And I would say it's still in effect because if it's not, then you probably have a problem with your PID. And you probably have a problem with the way that funds have been allocated. So I would, I would say that it is absolutely in effect, based on language in the previous ILA.
Can I follow up on that, Dennis?
Go ahead.
So I'm confused a little bit. So if that's still in effect, we have 2001, 2021 agreement? So are you saying we have two agreements in effect at the same time?
What about the two, 2023?
So does anyone up here have the executed 2021 agreement? Fully executed?
Well, excuse me, I got one that's got everybody's signature on it.
I have one.
But that doesn't mean in Trophy Club that it's fully executed.
Yeah.
I have one.
So, so what I have, what I have is the.
And it recorded.
Yeah, when does that one say it expires?
September 30th.
September, September 30th, 2023?
Yeah.
And it says the prior ILA shall terminate for all purposes as of this, as of the effective date. See, that's, that's where I'm getting confused, all right? And I'm coming to a point here, because of the reference in all the different versions, including the drafts that were unidentified as which draft they were. One, if there's anything in the, in the 2016 that needs to be addressed, for example, there's a clause, or there's a sentence, or there's a function, then I would request that that be identified in the new 2023 as a specific item. And in that, so that's for the function of it. And then once the 2023 is agreed to, whatever, I would like the 2016 to be specifically terminated in writing per what the language of the 2016 says, so that there's no more confusion. Because I'm going back to the 2016, which happens to have a, you know, an addendum or an attachment or something. There's none on the new one.
Yeah.
You follow me? So let's simplify it, let's just go to one document, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
And whatever it takes to legally do it, okay? Because then I've got to come to the new 2023 version that you wrote, or somebody's written, all right? And I have to look at that language and says, well, gee, does that continue to renew, you know, perpetually? Without somebody doing it? So anyway, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm only one person and I'm not, there's no motion, it's just what I would like to see.
Yeah.
I want to follow up on the same question, because I'm confused again. What Dennis just read, the current signed ILA, it says, I thought Dennis read, that that superseded the 2016. So if in fact that's what it says, does the 2016 still exist?
Yeah, that's a really great question.
Well, here's, may I, Dean?
Sure.
Because, all right, I've already been going around, and I've got your written response, thank you very much.
Yeah.
To it. It says this agreement shall automatically be extended for an additional five-year term unless written notice of non-renewal.
Yeah.
That's not just saying it in the next ILA, you'd had to have. And I don't want to embarrass the town by asking, well, has anybody ever looked to see if there's a written notice? Along with the 2008 ILA.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll say this, what, what you're asking is very easy to do. And I can absolutely make those changes to the ILA.
And once again, Dean, I'm only one person up here for, for what I'm, what I'm looking for. The other is, is the five-year, or the one-year with the four-year renewability, is that the town's request or the MUD's request?
That the MUD has requested a renewable agreement. So with the out, it at least gives us the time to get some understanding of how we could work to change to option one at some point. It gives us time to figure out what our next step's going to be.
Okay. I personally prefer a straight five-year deal. Not renewable and perpetual, but at the same time, that just means we don't argue about this thing or create any animosity or any contentious anxiety among anybody every year while we figure out, well, do we renew? Don't we, you know? So that's, I, and I understand the MUD's got their reasoning and their responsibility, but that would be my thought, a straight five-year deal.
So one, one point on that.
Oh, so the, so the purpose of the one-year with automatic renewals for a total period of five years is just to, to give you a funding out provision? And so it's just to, just to keep consistent with appropriations requirements under Texas law. And, I mean, it's not, it's not illegal on its face to have a five-year term, the five-year automatic renewals, chapter 791 actually allows you to have agreements for longer terms than one year. But the practical reality is each year you're going to have to fund.
Explain funding out to me.
Yeah, it's just like what you do in your budgetary process every year, so you, you don't authorize expenditures beyond the current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Do you not also have to have that PID agreement every year?
That's right, that's right, that's also, yes. So that, that's, that's also a mechanism in here that needs to be addressed. So PID has to go through its process, MUD has to go through its process, the city has to go through its own process.
So it has to be renewed or, or reviewed and renewed every year?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or not canceled?
Right.
Okay, I, I have a question, so I don't get into the numbers as much. But I'm thinking in terms of if we reach an agreement to go this direction with a renewable, I'd like to know what are the benefits to the town and what are the benefits to the MUD should we do that?
Yeah, I'll try this one. The benefit is we have joint use of the facility. We, we use their facility, we manage the program, the program or the shared personnel, we don't have to separate personnel and restaff and all that stuff. It's, it's, the benefit is we operate as we're operating today, it's, it's completely transparent to the town, the citizens of the town, the citizens of the PID, that the fire department and EMS operate seamlessly because we share the, the personnel. And with this agreement, we stay as a joint unit. So that's pretty generic, but it's, it's.
So it benefits both the same?
Yes.
And as I look at this and I think about the future, particularly over the next five years, the opportunity for the town and the MUD to come into a working relationship for the common good of our common customer. So I'm about how do we serve our common customer? They don't know the difference.
Right.
They're getting good service, they're getting the best water, and they're getting fast response time. And it just seems to me like if we could reach an agreement, this would allow everybody to have more time to focus on the opportunities versus spending so much time and so much energy always dealing with this relationship, which exists for the good of the town.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we choose to go this way, my offer to the MUD, I see some of our directors out there, and to their council and to our staff, is let's figure out a way to work together. Y'all, it's just too much chaos not to work together.
And that, that's my goal and my promise to the council, and I've talked to Chief Wise about this, they're our partner.
Yes.
And that's the way we're approaching this, I work with Alan, I'm talking to Alan, and I look forward to working with the MUD directors to come to an agreement. But they are our partners, I mean, there's no doubt about it, so.
Well, I guess I would argue that the current ILA, which is now almost two years in, in effect, did allow us to do that. I mean, we're changing some of the
Right.
the wording of it a little bit, but the ILA was put in place for that very reason. So let's not veer from what has seemingly been working, other than a couple things we've got to work out.
Right.
I don't want to go backwards, and I don't want anybody to.
Yeah. And, and I think this ILA, the way it's being written today and negotiated between Dean and the, and the MUD attorney, is to keep it as level and equal as possible. There's no, there, there isn't going to be no advantage to either side. It's just we are accepting responsibility to manage the fire department, and they're allowing us to keep our assets and personnel operating out of their facility. I know it doesn't say that, but that's really what we're agreeing to. And we're working together as one team for the town and Trophy Club.
In the ILA, it says the district covers, and that includes Westlake, but we don't service Westlake. Would you explain that?
Yes, sir. The MUD has jurisdiction in Westlake for a small part, portion that is commercial buildings and residential. They tax for fire service, but Westlake at some point in time in the past has deemed to create their own fire department. And don't quote me on this, but they basically have informed the MUD and the fire department that they are not needed to provide actual services to Westlake. So they exist in Westlake, they have the responsibility for fire protection in that small portion of Westlake that their district covers, but they're not necessarily their first responders for that. They have their own fire department, but we do have mutual aid and automatic aid. Chief, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Directors, is that good enough?
Okay. In the ILA draft of the 11th, the word "may" is used several times around the PID. You want to explain the word "may" versus any other words, "al" or whatever?
Yeah, sure, it just can't be assumed that it's already been approved. And again, they, the PID needs to go through its own process, statutory process under Texas law. And so you, you notice the PID is not a party to this agreement. So to assume that they are going to fund before they've taken any action, we just don't want to get out ahead of them. They have discretion. I, I understand the practical reality is they need the service, and so it's probably unlikely that they would ever say no. But still, just like a city council or town council, we don't, we don't like to get out in front of the decision makers.
Okay, so they have the, they have options, not so much the financial, but the ability to decide yes, no, who covers them, right?
That's right, they recommend to the town, and the town approves the budget, approves the SAP.
I'm almost done with my nine pages of questions that I'm not asking. If, nothing, if negotiations fail and we have to go back to the word zero, and you made a comment about employees, do they revert to the MUD or do they stay with us? If, that's, that's a
Right.
disaster idea, but it's always a possibility with negotiation.
As it stands today, that they're, they're our employees.
Right.
We pay them, they're part of our retirement system, so that would be a decision that would have to be made. If that came to that, I'm not, they wouldn't revert back to anything, because there's nothing to revert back to.
So the idea that, all right, hey, we don't do nothing, everything goes back to the word "go", that doesn't mean that everything's hunky-dory. You still have a lot of questions that have to be resolved.
Oh, no, there's, there's, there, it, yes, there is a lot of infrastructure and personnel that would have to be dismantled.
Thank you, that, that's my question.
Well, I have a question.
I'll have more before you, before it's over.
This is just a word question, but as I went through that, what's the difference in fire functions and fire protection services? Because you changed fire functions to fire protection services.
Yeah, so in previous drafts, all of those words were used interchangeably.
Okay.
And so what we've done is just narrowed it down to one word.
Consistency.
For the definition for consistency. And then if you're looking at the fire code, or the, the water code, chapter 49, there's a specific definition for fire, I think it's fire protective services.
Okay.
And so I think that was the intent originally, you know, when, when people are putting together these documents, going back and forth. I believe that's why you probably had several different ways to describe the same thing. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good, thanks. Other questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go for it.
Board members from MUD, I apologize, mea culpa. I was one of those that voted for the additional firemen not knowing that that had not gone through your purview and knowing that you're responsible for 50% of that cost, so apologize. We're both big government entities, and we both should be working with mutual respect, and we need to maintain that attitude. And again, for anything that seemed disrespectful in that, it was inadvertent, I apologize.
I have one other question, though, because it's, is, am I wrong that the MUD has not, their lawyer, the lawyer has not revised their
Responded.
Responded.
Yeah, so, well, okay, so they provided the original red lines.
Yeah, oh, okay.
And I noticed that there had been other input from several other people, and that's where you get the 2016, and then that's where you get the, you know, the supersede's and some of that other language. And so now that I understand what, what direction y'all want to go, and I can talk to her, and we can, we can refine some of these terms so that we're all on the same page. But she will return the document to me when she can, and then I'll take her red lines and we'll negotiate from there, but.
Well, based on what you know as to where she is, how close are we?
I don't think we're that far off. I don't.
Okay.
I hope.
Well, where, where, where we, where might we not be close enough?
Yeah, so one of the drafts that they provided would have reduced their 50% threshold.
Yes.
It, it said up to 50%. And so we revised that to no less than 50%, which means it could be more. And the city would, would, so if they do 51%, the city would do 49%. So this is just the back and forth and negotiation. So I don't know if, if Emily will come back and revise that, but 50/50 is what I've heard.
Yeah, okay, cool.
So.
Other comments, questions?
I just have, are we going on, or?
No, I was just going to follow up with, I'll be talking with Alan in the morning and talk to him about how this meeting went, and updating him on that since he couldn't make it tonight. So, and I'll, I'll see if I can get some, he'll obviously give me some feedback, but.
Well, my charge to you both is, from my perspective, we've had an ILA agreement that's been working. We need to get back to that, that should be our priority. You're charged with that, and that's my hope, so let's, let's get to that.
But isn't that what they're talking about, just staying with what we have but renewing it to meet our, our needs?
Yeah, well, the, the document we're working under today completely expires on the 30th. So we have to do something.
Correct.
So, and, and what we've done so far is worked with the MUD to make this a balanced document.
Well, the one we're under now is, I don't think is balanced, that's one. And then two, based on the actions that the town took in, in different areas without communications, therefore the relations between the MUD and the town council staff, whatever, is not exactly the best, or wasn't the best. And I think we're in the process of trying to co-op, cooperate, communicate, and to, to, you know, make that a level playing field for both sides, equal to the point. We have a excellent level of service now. So my first thought was, well, do we improve it? Do we try to maintain the status quo? Do we reduce our, reduce services? So my goal right now is to try and maintain the status quo, we're on an ISO 1. This is pretty damn good, so that's where I'm at.
That's our goal, is we can always get better, we'll do that, so, and we'll work together as a team. So, so I take it the direction is to continue with renewing the ILA?
Are y'all, you, you in agree with?
Affirmative.
Affirmative?
With the, with the things that I've said that are my personal ideas, excuse me, not my personal ideas.
Right, your, your.
Where my mind's going when I see this thing.
Stacy?
I agree.
Okay.
Steve?
There is one option.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that, okay. Mayor, can I ask if we move option five forward?
Uh, yes, yes.
I mean, not option, item five.
Your item five.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And Dean, Dean's going to come back up and help me with that one.
Okay, yes, so, item five is, uh, give direction regarding the PIT annexation into the mud.
This question has come up, it's come up during our feasibility studies, not during the meeting itself, but after the meeting. And so, we've had some discussion about how this could possibly happen and, and if it would be beneficial. So, it's a lot more complicated than we, we talked about, since we've talked to both the mud attorney and Dean has, and I have had the discussion about this. So, annexation is a, it's going to be a mud issue. The mud would have to, uh, re, hear about this, have a request, and then put it on their ballot for an election. So, it would be a mud election to annex the PIT into the, to the town, the mud. So, it, it, that's it in a very short nutshell. Your role, and Dean's going to speak this to correct anything I might get wrong here, um, your role would be to vote, to turn over the infrastructure, the water lines and the sewer lines to the mud as infrastructure that would go with the PIT. So, that would be your role in this whole thing, and maybe even asking for this to happen is a possibility. So, can you fill in anything I may have gotten wrong or questions?
A reasoning for doing this would be to bring the entire town under the mud, which would allow for current PIT residences to run for a mud position on the board so they have a voice. That's, that, that would be the, the reasoning for that.
Yeah, so I, I apologize, I should have started with that. Annexation to the PIT would mean they would become, um, mud, not only mud members, but they would not be assessed by a PIT assessment, they would be taxed by the mud for fire and for mud purposes. So, they would become, just like the rest of the town, uh, as mud members where, yes, they would have the authority, the, the privilege to vote for the board, mud board, um, and things like that.
And one other thing, that would, that would mean that instead of paying an assessment, which is not tax deductible for, for the PIT residents at this point in time, then it would be a true tax and it would be
Right.
You'd be able to write it off your, your tax, uh, annual tax report.
Yes, because, because currently mud residents are, do have a property tax assessment from the mud each year. So, the town taxes, the county taxes, the school district taxes, and so does the mud. The PIT residents don't see that mud tax. They have the assessment from the town because they choose to use the mud services.
I have a novel idea. Well, well, isn't the mud, they could open it up and have a representative from the PIT on their board. I don't know why, but they could.
I'm, I'm not sure that that's a viable option.
I don't know, but who knows?
It would have to be
If you want to work together.
Have to be researched.
I'm just saying. What'd you say, Dean?
I said, yeah, we'd have to take a look. I, I would have so many questions, I mean
Probably it's not, but I'm just saying, you know, thinking outside the box, I mean, what is
Sure, sure.
They're saying they're not represented.
I would not want to spend any town money on an attorney to do that.
No, I know, I know.
That's a mud issue, okay, please.
But still
I think, I think that's what he's saying.
But, but still, you know
Well, immediately my mind goes to, are the, are the PIT bonds paid off, do we know?
No, twenty thirty-four.
Twenty thirty-four, right, yeah, yeah. So, the direction is no direction.
Okay, no direction, that is a, uh, completed item?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? You want?
Thank you.
Nope.
Okay, Patrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Hang in there. Terry, would you like to read item three, please?
I will. Consider and approve amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three budget of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, providing for an amendment to correct funds related to the property tax and other revenue funds.
Are you going to speak to that, Patrick? I don't know if you want it or not.
No, I mean, basically, just, uh, in complete accuracy and transparency, uh, we had a, a little bit of inaccurate information that we need to correct on our, uh, tax document and our budget for this current year, so that's what this is about.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the amended, uh, budget as presented.
Hold on a second. Those in favor, raise your hand, please. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Good. Item four, please. Motion passes.
Number four, consider and approve the amending of the tax rate on the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three, budget of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, providing for correction to the tax rate calculated on the budget to zero point four three four seven nine nine.
Yes, this is the same thing, it's just a clerical error we need to correct on our side, um, but this is the actual tax rate that everybody in the town was taxed on their property tax last year, so there's no effect to anyone in the town.
And, and to be clear, this was what was sent to, and, you know, to, to Denton County, correct?
Denton County received the, the tax rate we're talking about today, you approved a different number, so we need to correct that number that you approved. To, to this number.
And that was just purely a typographical error because an extra four was added to the, the value.
No, it was, we presented four, three, five, zero, 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 and that's what you voted on, and we sent this to the county.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the amended tax rate as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lorraine, seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand.